All right, you can go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. The May 3, 2023, meeting of the Seattle City Council's Public Assets and Homelesses Committee will come to order. It is 2:01 PM. I'm Andrew Lewis, Chair of the Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Juarez.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Did you say Morales?
Councilmember Musqueta. And Chair Lewis.
Present.
Chair, there are three members present.
Thank you, Parker. And as additional council members come in, I will announce their presence for the record. Approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Public comment. I will moderate the public comment period in the following manner. The public comment period for this meeting is 20 minutes unless the speaker list is exhausted sooner. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. Parker, how many people do we have signed up to give public comment?
There are no people signed up for public comment today.
Both in person and remotely? Okay. Well, given that there is no one signed up for public comment, I will end the public comment period, and we will proceed to items of business. Will the Clerk please read item one into the record?
Item one, Council Bill 120548, an ordinance relating to the Seattle Department of Finance and Administrative Services, or FAS, authorizing the acquisition of real property identified in King County records as parcel number 766620 through 2390, commonly known as the Backon Building, from Washington State Department of Transportation, authorizing acceptance and recording of deeds for general municipal purposes, including but not limited to the acquisition of the Backon Building property and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you so much. We are joined by Director Marshall Foster, or Interim Director Marshall Foster, of the Seattle Center, and Interim Director Angela Brady from the Seattle Office of the Waterfront. We are also joined by Karen Grun from Finance and Administrative Services, and Eric McConaughey from Council Central Staff. I'm also very pleased to welcome Muckleshoot Tribal Chairman Jason Elkin and Vice Chair Donnie Stevenson, who are joining us at committee table here in council chambers. Thank you so much for being here today. And so in terms of starting off this presentation, let's first have city staff give us an overview of the Backon Building, and then I want to hand it over to Chairman Elkins and Vice Chair Stevenson to talk further about this partnership and this proposal. So Marshall, should, are you going to start us off here? And can you introduce the rest of your city panel?
Yes. Thank you, council member. Council members, it's great to be with you this afternoon. If it's all right, I'll just do a quick introduction. Marshall Foster, interim director at Seattle Center, and I'm joined here by, I see, Karen Grun, Real Estate Director, hoping to get your title correct, at FAS. We have Angie Brady, who is our acting director of the also Office of the Waterfront and Civic Projects. I know she's having a camera challenge this morning, or this afternoon, so may not be on video. And we have Tiffany Malakay, who is our waterfront operations manager, soon to be waterfront operations manager here at Seattle Center, and Katie Tassary from FAS's real estate team. Did I miss anyone?
Kyle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kyle Butler, finance manager at the Office of the Waterfront. Should we just go straight into our presentation?
Yes, please. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Katie, if you don't mind pulling up the slides for us. Just while you're doing that, I also just want to give my appreciation for having Chair Elkins and Vice Chair Stevenson here today. I'm sorry we're not there with you in the, in the chambers, but really appreciate all the partnership around making this project happen. Thanks, Katie. Can you put that on full screen? There you go. Great. All right. Next slide, please. Okay, just what we're going to do is just walk you through the basics of the building, why we're proposing the purchase, the partnership with the, with the Muckleshoot Tribe, as well as the uses for the building to support waterfront operations. And then we'll talk obviously about next steps. Basic information first and foremost about the building. Built in 1925, it's right at the foot of the Pike Street Hillclimb. Centrally located, I mean literally, it is the central location on our new waterfront park. It's currently owned by the state of Washington. I think it has the, it is the only building that the viaduct passed over. So it literally, if you remember the viaduct when it ran along here, it went over the building, and so the state purchased it as part of the construction of the viaduct. 16,000 square feet on a 4,300 square foot lot. You see the zoning there, 85 feet in the Pike Market District. It has an easement that was purchased by the adjacent Hillclimb Court condominiums, which you see in the background there, for the air rights. So it's not developable above the, essentially, the current size. And you can see there at the bottom, it's got a total of four stories, including a very generous basement level that you can't see from the street. Next slide. So going back to the Elliott Bay Seawall project, many of you recall the years of work to design, develop that in partnership with a lot of different interests in the community. A central one, I would say, the central partnership on that project was with the Suquamish and Muckleshoot Tribes, both of which have treaty-protected rights to the waters of Elliott Bay. And one of the key things which we agreed to as part of that work, we being, in this case, the Seattle Department of Transportation, was that, you know, as part of the Seawall project, there's a whole host of different habitat enhancements that were provided for juvenile salmon. I'm not going to talk about those at length. Those were part of our tribal partnership. Another important element was that the city would provide space for Tribal Interpretive Center as part of the Waterfront Seattle program. We didn't identify a location, because frankly, we didn't know where we could do this yet, but we knew it would be important to kind of our cultural partnership to create a space for really, you know, giving the tribe the opportunity to tell their story, to be present in space with us on the waterfront, and to be able to do programming and other things directly on, within the project. And so we made that commitment as part of the permitting of the Elliott Bay Seawall. I want to say this was in 2013, and Angie Brady, feel free to jump in if I, if you remember, if there's other details you want to add into that. More recently, you know, we have been doing a good bit of work with the state to look at options for this back-end building. They realized they no longer needed it after the viaduct was removed, and their contractor actually used it for staging space for quite some time. We realized it would be a great location for that Tribal Interpretive Center. And so we went to the tribe, we had a series of discussions, and we came to a joint conclusion that this was a good fit, and the tribe confirmed for us that if we were to make it available, portions of it available for the Tribal Interpretive Center, it would be acceptable and would meet the terms of our commitment. I should have mentioned that this particular part of our permit for the Seawall actually is in the Army Corps of Engineers permit. So this is a part of our federal approvals as well for the project. The other key thing that we've been planning for for many years is waterfront operations. And so as part of the operations of the future waterfront, why don't we go to the next slide? Sorry. Thanks, Katie. As part of the waterfront park operations, we have committed and are excited to be now hiring a dedicated team that will focus on all the aspects of public space management down there, maintenance and public safety, as well as we, as you know, have a strong partnership with Friends of Waterfront Seattle to do programming. For that team to really work well and to build the culture we want around that team, they need to have a dedicated base. They need to have a home base right on the waterfront, and we realized this building would be a fabulous way to provide that. And so we're actually able to achieve a couple of goals here at once. Getting that interpretive center and also creating the home base for that dedicated staff as they do their work on the waterfront. And the good news is that the building, like I mentioned, 16,000 square feet, plenty of room. We think we're, we're able to provide an interpretive center that everyone feels good about, as well as, you know, all the space we're going to need for that staff right at the heart of the new waterfront. Next slide. So we actually are very far down the road now of planning out the operations of, planning out the waterfront operations. Seattle Center, thanks to the legislation which, which the council adopted last year, is advancing to be that lead partner. We're planning to assume responsibility on July 1 of this year. And in order to do so, you know, we've been doing a pretty extensive hiring. This is all based on our adopted budget for '23 through '25. It's reflected in funding that was provided as part of the Seattle Parks District, the new spending plan for that. And again, a huge thank you to this committee for your leadership on getting that put together. You can see there different positions that are being created. Next slide. Here's where the back-end building is. So if you, if you can picture, you know, our new surface street opened this past weekend, and congrats to the team for getting to that milestone. This is Pike Street Hillclimb, coming down, crossing over to essentially the aquarium, Pier 58, Pier 62, the new overlook walk, and you can see the back-end building there, just on the south side of that Pike Street Hillclimb as you get, as you get to the bottom. Next slide. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. If you have questions about the space layout, I'm happy to do that. You can see here, the Tribal Interpretive Center will be the primary space. It'll be the ground floor of the building, as well as there's a very large mezzanine space above the ground floor. So when you walk by on the street, when you experience it, it'll very much, that will be the sort of a primary piece. It has large retail blazing, big open windows on the hill, hillclimb, and on the new, the new surface street, all of which I think are going to be great opportunities for us to showcase the interpretive center. And next slide. And then the waterfront operations will be in the basement primarily. We have basically crew quarters, bathrooms, break rooms, all the things we need for that operations team. And then on the top floor, we will have office space for the management of that team, crew chief, and, you know, various support staff for the waterfront operations. There is also in this pink color, kind of a shared space where we're going to have a conference room and opportunities for kind of gatherings and events, which will be available both to the city and to the tribe as part of the interpretive center. All right. Team, is there anything that I'm forgetting to mention? Okay. I think with that, I am going to hand it over to our partner, Karen Grun, and I'm just going to say one more thank you. FAS has really stepped up and taken on this project with us and is bringing enormous value in terms of their expertise on how to actually deliver a city facility. So thank you, Karen, and team.
Thank, thank you, Marshall. And yes, this is a collaborative effort between a number of city departments. So what you're looking at here on the screen is the different roles of the different departments. My department, Finance and Administrative Services, conducted the due diligence on the building, and will actually close on the transaction, assuming the committee approves the transaction and the council approves the transaction later this summer. Once the city takes possession of the building, the property will be managed by FAS as well through our facility operations team. And then we have a capital development team who will oversee the capital project to renovate and improve the space and make it occupiable for the various uses that Marshall talked about, the city team, as well as the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. The ESTA team and the Office of Waterfront has already been mentioned, and the MOA, the Memorandum of Agreement that was signed with the Muckleshoot Tribe, will lead to ESTA and the Office of Waterfront team working with the tribe to come up with the space planning as part of this project. And then Seattle Center, through the ordinance 126755, will staff and manage the waterfront park, and they'll be responsible for the operations and maintenance team that will be housed within the facility once it's ready to go. And then the next slide sets forth the funding estimates at this point. What we know so far is that, again, assuming that we approve the acquisition of the building, the purchase price is approximately $8.7 million. The budget total is $13 million, and the balance of that, $4.3, will be spent on building renovations system-wide, so throughout the building, to repair and replace the communication systems, the elevator, the fire and protection systems. So that will be a four-floor project estimated at $1.8 million to make the building occupiable. There's also $1 million in the program for seismic upgrades. There's another million in the program for the tenant improvements that are needed for the operations team that will operate out of the building. And then we have half a million for contingency costs and closing costs. These are high-level estimates in May of 2023. And as we get involved in next steps, which is on the next slide, these costs will move into more hardened costs, if you will. First, right now, we are asking for the committees and the councils' consideration to acquire the building. We would purchase it from the Washington State Department of Transportation by or before June 30 of this year. And then for the rest of this year, the FAS team would be engaged in design and permitting to design the capital improvement program and, and obtain the necessary permits. Into 2024, we would begin construction, and we estimate that will take the full year of 2024. And then at the early part of the year, the team will work with the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe on a space planning effort for the Tribal Interpretive Center space. And then we believe the building will be available for occupancy in the first quarter of 2025, when we're complete with the entire program to invest in the building. And with that, I think we're ready for questions or to turn it back to our chair. Thank you.
Karen, thank you so much. I also just want to state for the record that Councilmember Musqueta has joined the meeting. Should we, should we do city questions now, or should we hold until after we hear from Chairman Elkins and Vice Chair Stevenson, who are in council chambers? I think that would be my preferred course of action, would be to turn it over to our representatives from the Muckleshoot Tribe. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chairman Elkins, to introduce yourself and, and the vice chairman, and get into talking about this great partnership that we have before us today.
I'd be happy to. Jason Elkins, T-Stud, 12-Chud, Muckleshoot. My name is Jason Elkins. I'm the chairman of the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, and it's an absolute honor to be here in, in the, in the chambers, and wanted to thank the Andrew Lewis, Councilmember President Juarez, and Councilmember Musqueta. Thank you, and all your staff for all the wonderful work that you do for, for the city of Seattle. I just want to say that the Muckleshoot Tribe, we, we want to be active, active partners with the city. We, we share a lot of the same goals and objectives, and we just want to be good, good partners with everybody. So see Marshall up there. Marshall, you've been working with us for a long time, and I just wanted to thank you for everything that you do. It seems like it's been since 2003, or when did the Seawall project start? That's, for us.
But planning way ahead.
Okay. Yeah. And, you know, as the original people of these lands, it's, that's just a blink of, blink of the eye. And I just wanted to say, growing up native, I, without seeing myself in mainstream society, we felt pretty invisible. And, and as a fisherman who fished, who fishes, you know, the Lake Washington system, the Samamish system, Cedar River, Green River, Duamish, Elliott Bay, you know, Lake Union, all these different places, it's hard to find representation of, of, of our people when we were growing up. And a lot of the fishing that we did was at nighttime. So a lot of people really didn't even know what we were doing out there. And if they did, sometimes it was, it was negative interactions. But a lot of my job and Donnie's job is, is educating people. And, you know, we want to be seen, we want to be heard, we want to tell our stories. And I believe that with this interpretive center in a prime location, you know, at the waterfront, we can, we can be innovative, we can be creative, and we could tell our stories to whoever wants to listen. And through that, I just think that we can add a lot of texture and a lot of soul to our city. And with that being said, my hands go up to everybody here, and I appreciate all the work that you do, and I wanted to pass the mic over to our vice chairman, Stevenson.
Hux, they are. Donnie Stevenson, T-Stud, Muckleshoot, Abchud. Good day to everyone here. My name is Donnie Stevenson, and I'm the vice chairman of the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe. I'd like to thank our, our chairman, Jason Elkins, for his leadership on this project, along with Marshall and his team. The footprint of what is today the city of Seattle, especially the waterfront, lies directly in the heart of what is the traditional homeland of the Muckleshoot people. And through this project and partnership with the city programs who we've worked to bring it to the table today, we feel as though we formed a partnership that allows us to retake our rightful place within the cityscape and identity of the city of Seattle. I'll, I'll be short and just thank all involved, and this committee, and the council members involved for their leadership and, and partnership and collaboration and coming together to allow us to do so. My hands are raised to everyone who helped us get it to this point, and I thank you for your consideration for us moving it to the next step and the next phase. It'll be a day of celebration for us when we're able to open an interpretive center on the waterfront within the city of Seattle, because ultimately, it's where our people belong. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for joining us today. This is really great, and I'm very excited to see this agreement relating to this property finally coming together, because we've been talking about it for a long time. Now that we've had everyone present, unless Eric, you have anything you want to add before we ask questions?
Excuse me. No, I don't, I do not have anything to add, but thank you for asking.
Great. So why don't we open it up to committee members if there are questions or comments about this legislation that's in front of us, looking to see if there's any raised hands? Council President Juarez.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Lewis, or Chair Lewis, I'm sorry. Well, first of all, before I get to the tribal leadership piece, Angie and Marshall, thank you. Thank you. I know that this has been going on at least since I've been there. God, thank you. It's been a lot of work, but it's been worth it. And also thank you with the relationship that we've had with the Muckleshoot Nation and tribal leadership, Chair Elkins and Vice Chair Donnie. By the way, Donnie, I was a little bit surprised that you said you weren't going to say a lot, that you're not known for that. So I'm giving you a hard time. We learned a lot at the tribal summit yesterday. Three issues were homelessness, public safety, and cultural resources, environment, and the water, the waterfront did come up, and that is like a wonderful, it's a wonderful asset to the city. It's been working on it, but having, if, if you remember back in the day, Marshall, and I know the tribal leadership understands this as well, we weren't talking about this kind of footprint. We were talking about like maybe a kiosk, and we were all like, that, that's not going to work. So these are the ancestral grounds, the unceded territory, and the fishing rights and the usual custom areas of the Muckleshoot Nation per treaty. And so for the city of Seattle to honor that and memorialize that, but not only that, basically put your money where your mouth is and have a physical presence, brick and mortar, for an interpretive center, which a lot of cities don't do. So first of all, thank Chair Lewis for his leadership. I know, I, I think you're, we're not a hard act to follow, Councilmember Lewis, me and Councilmember Bagshaw, and you've certainly done well. So thank you for that. And we really are happy that, under Councilmember Lewis's leadership, that Seattle Center will take over the waterfront and do the magic that you do, Marshall, from, from the waterfront to the Seattle Center, and now you got the, you got the waterfront back in your portfolio again. So this is going to be amazing. It's continuous. It's, it's that momentum. It's that leadership. And I hope to see that. And I'm a huge, huge, and again, we raise our hands to Chairman Elkins and Vice Chair Stevenson, because I know behind the scenes that they've been working really hard, not only with the city of Seattle, but with their own people and electorate. They're elected as well, and they know that they have to balance and provide leadership and show the Muckleshoot Nation and their residents, their citizens, their relatives, that they're making a difference in their city. So thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And, you know, in between me having this committee and Councilmember Bagshaw having this committee, you had this committee. So, you know, we're just putting in place a lot of initiatives that you helped lean on to get us to this place, and very grateful for, for your stewardship of the waterfront and developing a lot of these projects with the team here. So thank you so much.
Well, because you also kept us out of litigation as well, so thank you.
Yeah. Look at us, two council members thanking each other, and we haven't even let Councilmember Musqueta get in yet, right? So anyway, if there's anybody else who wants to jump in and ask questions, I could jump in and ask just a few. I, like I said, we, we did, subsequent to beginning the meeting, have Councilmember Musqueta join. There are four of us present today. I'm not seeing any hands. So I'll just jump in and say, you know, as we look at putting all these pieces together on our waterfront campus of the, you know, the overlook walk, the Pike Place Market, the aquarium expansion, the protected bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and now we're going to have, be in a position to have this great partnership with the Muckleshoot Tribe. What is the, the broader programming on the entire waterfront look like? And this can be both for the, for our guests from the Muckleshoot Tribe, as well as from the waterfront team. But how do we envision the activations from the Backon Building spilling out and being a broader part of what we're doing in this public sphere? Because it is, you know, from looking at the diagrams we looked at earlier, we are going to be making a lot of improvements to a building that historically has not been very prominent, right? It's been, it's been shielded, it's been held back by the viaduct. We're now going to make it the opposite of that. We're going to make it a very community-centered building. We're going to make it a very public-facing building. So walk us through a little bit of, of what those changes are going to be and how soon we can expect to, to see them. And maybe that's for Marshall first, or I could turn it back over to Chairman Elkins?
Yeah, we, I could say a little bit about it, that from what I know is that we have a architect who's familiar with the, the, that area, that, that can help make it, make it consistent with everything else around. You want to add to that, Donnie?
Just from a vision, vision standpoint for us, it's an opportunity to assert our identity, to place our, our cultural footprint on an area that we consider vitally important to our people and tradition, and, and we want it to be front-facing. We want it to be a, a highlight of the waterfront. We want it to represent our people and our culture in a way that we can be absolutely proud of. And I think the commitment that the tribe is willing to put forward is that the building itself will be a representation of who we are, and we're very proud of who we are.
the building itself will be a representation of who we are and we're very proud of who we are. And I think there's a lot of discussion happened sort of between now and then, but at the end of the day, I envision Muckleshoot Longhouse on the, on the Seattle waterfront and would love to see it happen.
Great. And Marshall, anything else to add here before we, we move on?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. I will just add a few thoughts. I, I think that's exactly the spirit we're moving into this with is, is we have had the benefit of some good partnerships already with the Muckleshoot to do events. We had some early art elements that took place on Pier 62. Friends of Waterfront Seattle has been working closely with a number of different tribes, including critically the Muckleshoot, to bring that programming into the space. And obviously Salmon Homecoming, which has for many years been without a clear, consistent home in Seattle, now has one at Pier 62. So now having the Muckleshoot Tribe as a neighbor and a partner in space with us, those partnerships are going to grow. They're going to get more natural and I'm just excited to see where it goes. I don't think we know exactly where we'll all go, but I think we know we're creating incredible spaces all around this new interpretive center. And our hope is that the interpretive center is the starting point that everything can grow out from and sort of be that programming partner to the city and to Friends of Waterfront Seattle.
Great. Well, I don't have any additional questions for the panel and I don't see colleagues indicating any additional questions or comments. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move Council Bill 120548. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Are there any final remarks on the bill that is before the committee? Seeing and hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the recommendation of the passage of the council bill?
Councilmember Herbold? Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Musqueta?
Aye.
Chair Lewis?
Um, yes, you did not, you didn't call Council President.
My apologies.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Yeah, the only native here, but thank you. Aye.
And Chair Lewis.
It's the opinion of the Chair Council President indicated an aye vote. And so with that, Mr. Clerk, what is, or Parker, what is the final tally?
Chair, there are four votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. So the bill will be recommended to full council for final passage and that is going to occur on next Tuesday, on Tuesday, May 9th. And we look forward to considering it there and hopefully confirming the opinion of the committee. So thank you so much. And thank you very much to our guests from the Muckleshoot Tribe for coming down here today. Really, really good to see you and really excited to enter into this partnership. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lewis.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you all.
Okay, let's move on to item two. Will the committee clerk please read item two into the record?
Item two, Council Bill 120559. An ordinance relating to current use taxation, approving applications for current use taxation of properties located at 4200 Baker Avenue Northwest and 2317 South Norman Street, under the King County Public Benefit Rating System.
Uh, thank you, Parker. Before we consider this legislation, we need to have a public hearing. As the presiding officer, I am now opening the public hearing on Council Bill 120559 relating to current use taxation. I will set the speaking time for people wishing to comment during the public hearing at two minutes per speaker. And Parker, are there any speakers signed up for this public, for this public hearing?
There are no speakers signed up. It looks as though we do have one in chambers.
Anyone in chambers wishing to speak, do please approach the microphone, introduce yourself and we will recognize you for two minutes. So thank you so much.
Potterood, I am on the Board of Directors of Grow, which is the applicant in this, in these PBRS proceedings. I don't have any testimony or statement to make, but I am available to answer any questions the council may have or others may have. And I just wanted to introduce myself and express my appreciation for Mr. Whitson and Mr. Bernstein for shepherding our application through the process and getting us here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will note that Lish Whitson is present on Zoom for the meeting as well to answer technical questions. Anyone else wishing to speak as part of this public hearing previously noted for today's council agenda on Council Bill 120559? Seeing and hearing no additional speakers, I am going to close the public hearing. And we will move on to a broader discussion of the bill. I do need to note, after our discussion, we will need to suspend the rules if we determine we want to take action on this bill today. I personally have no objection to doing that. But at the beginning of our discussion, I wanted to put that out there as something that will be procedurally required if we want to take action on the bill. So before we get into it further, Lish, would you like to give a, give the presentation or the overview of Council Bill 120559?
Sure, happy to. Lish Whitson, Council Central Staff, and I have a very short presentation to describe what's in front of you. All right. So these are two applications that have been received for current use taxation under a Washington State program. The program is intended to support open space preservation privately on property by reducing property taxes for those properties that are committed to long-term or permanent open space. Open space, forced land, farmland and landmarks are all eligible under the system. It requires a public hearing from both King County and the CLC Council and the King County Council and the CLC Council both need to approve the applications for the property tax reductions to apply. King County Council's Transportation, Economy and Environment Committee will be considering these in a week or so. And I'm joined by Bill Bernstein from King County who shepherds the program for the King County Department of Natural Resources and Parks. Both applications are, have been submitted by Grow, which is a nonprofit that supports community gardening and in particular Seattle's P-Patch Program. These properties are owned by Grow and used as P-Patches under the Department of Neighborhoods P-Patch Program. So these are sort of a public-private partnership where the city helps to manage the use of the P-Patches, but Grow owns the property. The first one is the Hazel Heights P-Patch, which is located in the western portion of the Fremont neighborhood, the corner of 42nd and Baker Avenue Northwest. The application is to maintain the P-Patch as open space. There is an easement that has been granted by Grow to the city of Seattle that requires the property to be held in permanent use as a P-Patch. The city is the beneficiary of that easement. So this application gets about the maximum amount that's possible for a property under King County's Public Benefit Rating System. It's a public recreation area. It has unlimited public access. There is a conservation easement on the property and the combination of easement and public access sort of bumps up the score significantly. If approved, it would result in a temper, the property being valued at 10% of the market value with a 90% reduction in taxable value for the property. The other application is very similar. It's part of the Judkins Park P-Patch is owned by Grow. The other part, the southern parcel that you can see here is owned by the city. It's located at 2317 South Norman Street, one block west, sorry, one block east of Judkins Park in the Judkins Park Central District neighborhood. And again, there's a permanent easement on the property. The city is the beneficiary of that easement. And it receives the maximum value and the same reduction in taxable value. And I'm, we're available for any questions council members may have.
Thank you so much, Lish. And is there anything that Bill Bernstein would like to add before we open it up for questions? Bill, I think you're muted. Oh, here, go ahead. I think we got you now. Go ahead.
Great. No, I don't have any, yeah, I don't have anything to add other than just, thanks for having me. I think Lish has described the two properties well. And I'm happy to answer any questions that might come up from, from King County's perspective.
Thank you so much. I do not have any immediate questions about this. This is, I think, our third consideration of legislation under this program this year, I believe. So I think we're pretty used to, to considering these proposals and if they, they meet all the criteria. You know, we've approved the previous applications for this. But I'm going to open it up now to colleagues if there, if there are questions as it relates to this particular proposal. And I don't see any questions. So given that following the presentation, the council doesn't have any, or the committee doesn't have any follow-up questions on this particular use of the, the application for the, the this King County Public Benefit Rating System program. I am going to go ahead and make a motion to suspend the rules to allow the committee to vote on the bill on the same day of the public hearing, which we had earlier during the presentation for this bill. If there is no objection from colleagues to so suspend the rules, hearing no objection, the council rule is suspended and the committee will proceed with voting on the bill. So I would like to move now Council Bill 120559. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll on the recommendation of the passage of Council Bill 120559?
Absolutely. Councilmember Herbold? Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Musqueta?
Aye.
And Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Oh my God.
Chair, there are four in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Parker. With four votes, there will be a recommendation to pass this legislation brought to the May 9th City Council Meeting for final action. And that is our final listed agenda item this afternoon. If there is no further business to come before the committee, seeing and hearing none, it is 2:44 PM and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everyone.